It's when they propose that all.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Here.
Commissioner Des Jardins?
Here.
Commissioner Burge?
Here.
Commissioner Prunick?
Here.
Mayor Beal?
Here.
It will be public comment, four minutes in. Yep, come on up.
I'll keep it short.
We have four minutes.
It won't take that long. My name is Jim Parker. I'm the former CEO of Muni City Memorial Hospital. And I just want to say a few kind words because soon I'll be leaving Muni City. The hospital's amazing. It's a cornerstone of any community, and I pray that it's here for 100 or more years. Great things happen there. Top 25th percentile quality of care nationwide as compared to all other hospitals. This hospital's in the country. $2 million grant, the largest grant from the state of Michigan budget in the entire Upper Peninsula. Getting a new x-ray machine, new mammography, new CT workstation, ultrasound bed in addition to the ultrasound that we already replaced, new roof on specialty clinic in addition to the roof that we replaced on the other half of the hospital. New windows in specialty clinic, new floor and ER renovation, trauma beds, new trauma lights, ER sleep room will be redone. The flooring in and outside the emergency department, new entrance. Every single thing we identified that we could that revolved around patients, we use these funds to get. And over the next course, the next year and a half, two years, those projects will come to fruition and people's lives will be improved. Some of those things will last well over 20 years. Two new doctors, Dr. Stephanie Weest, Dr. Chris Faber, emergency role health clinic grounded in the hospital, grounded in the nursing home. These are doctors that didn't have to come here. They could have gone anywhere. But we go to practice around the patient and around providers at the same time. Senior Life Solutions outpatient senior behavioral health. It's group therapy, individual therapy. In the words of one of the patients who graduated from the program, she said, "Senior Life Solutions saved my life." So there's a whole lot more I can say about what we got done in the past two and a half years. But the glory goes to the employees that work in the building for the hospital, world-class care, hands down. No exceptions. I love them. The glory goes to the providers, the physicians, the nurse practitioners, the physician assistants. You all know them. They're our neighbors, our friends, and our caregivers saving lives every day. And the glory goes to the board for the approvals that they gave us and the authorizations to do the work that we did for the organization of health and human kindness where we are improving people's lives. It was an honor to have been here, and I just want to say thank you to the mayor, to the manager, to council, to the people of Muni City and the people of Altria County. You have, no exception, you have a great hospital, and thank you for your support and as much as you can do to make it a cornerstone of the community. It was a labor of love for me. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Katie Schneider. I'm a master gardener and interested in starting a community garden in Muni City. I've reached out to some of the community and it seems like there's a pretty big interest. So, but currently we don't have a spot or are unaware of a spot that could be used, so that's why I'm here.
I don't know if there's somehow it could be pursued or, I mean...
So with this being public comment, if the commission would like to put this as an agenda item, we'd have to move to the next meeting. And in the meantime, you guys, with me being here, my contact information's online. If you want to email me tomorrow morning, I can start kind of brainstorming this stuff with you too.
Okay, that sounds great.
Katie, we did a series of community gardens about 15 years ago. Just give me a call.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Hello. Some of your faces are familiar, some not quite yet. My name is Alex. I took over for Matthew Monkeys of the Alpha Conservation District, and I'm the new director. I wanted to come over and formally introduce myself. I know I haven't been here yet. It's been a really busy last six months for us, as you can probably imagine, transition periods usually are. So I'm here to assist Muni City and every other township and city that I can in this process. Katie came to us a short while ago. We hope to support that effort in partnership with the townships and the cities. So just want to again introduce myself, say hi. And I know I've worked with the acquisition project over at Overlook as well. So hoping to do projects that enhance really the experience of our community.
I can say that. Thank you all. Moving on, item C consent agenda. Another thing, I'm kind of in uncharted water. Got the city attorney's report and we wanted to discuss an item?
Wanted to discuss an item, yeah.
So it's not on the consent agenda? Do we have to put it on?
The public.
And then pull it. It's not on yet though.
Yeah.
So you got to put it on and then, so I don't know, can we do it one false slip or do we, how do we do that?
It depends on how you want to do it. You could do it one false slip. You can have a motion to approve the consent agenda without the attorney's report.
And then?
And then later on after that, you can have a motion to accept it. Because like you said, it's not part of consent.
I mean, normally it is.
Normally, normally it's.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda absent the city attorney's report. I'll support.
Okay, moved by Commissioner, the starter's supported by Commissioner Wilkinson to accept the city attorney's monthly report.
Yes.
To approve the consent agenda.
I'm sorry. Sure. Okay, to approve the consent agenda absent the city attorney's report. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried.
I would move that we add the attorney's report under, as item one under new business.
How about one A?
A1 or one A.
Let's go one A. Okay, got support? I'll support. Okay, moved by Commissioner Starnes, supported by Commissioner Prunick to add the city attorney's monthly report to the new business area of the agenda under item one A. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Okay, item new business. Item one A is, I'm sorry, the city attorney's monthly report. Anybody have any questions on that?
Yes. Task five as well as pending B, the public peace ordinance number 12. Yes.
Can I get more details on where you're at in that process and the timeline that you're taking on this?
I looked at it. The problem with it is that, not a problem, but the challenge is that it's a broad question that was raised, you know, constitutionality. And it really was a question of whether that whole ordinance has some unconstitutional issues to it or not. So I mean, it's going to take me a minute to go through all that and each section of that and how it applies to the Constitution and whatnot. I mean, you raised some interesting legal questions, and I'll get there. I was busy the last couple weeks, so as a timeframe, I can have it by the end of this week.
Okay.
But I want to, and part of what I do with these, I don't know if Rob did these attorney reports, but the reason I do it is just to tell you, but it keeps me on track as well. And especially the second page keeps me, so I don't kind of like, okay, so when I have time out packages and like, okay, I need to do this, this, this. So yes, I have those four items on page two, and I plan to knock it all of them off this week.
Okay, just to provide greater context for everybody, I'm concerned about if we have to change that and the timeline that it would take, like if we needed to change an ordinance of this level. Do we have to go through the two-meeting process? Do we just scrap it and then start from new? Like with that, that aspect of it, I'm feeling pressure of the timeline because of instances that have happened inside Altria County and with federal politics the way that they are. We can absolutely not, by any means necessary or whatever, have an ordinance on the books that says that somebody that is under the age of 18 needs to carry around work papers with them. It's not happening. It's got to go, and it's got to go now. I don't understand how an ordinance, and this is not you, and I'm looking at you just because of everything else, but I don't understand how good governance as you review your ordinances every five years for constitutionality and something like this is on the books from 92. This is, this is a really bad spot for us with changeovers at the national politics level. We hear new stories about things every day and for a community that relies on J-1 workers, that relies on international tourism, that has had border patrol investigations already commenced in Grand Marais and have scared away immigrants that have been living in this country for 60 years in western Altria County. I need to make sure that before a single J-1 steps in this town, that we don't have a terrible horrific ordinance, even if it's done by accident on the books. So I need to make sure that the timeline's going to be there. So and like I said, you've done it. You've held up your ult. I want to give you credit for that too. I just want to make sure that it's clear for everybody. Like that's why the timeline's there. It's not because of you. It's because real life is happening and whatever is going to trickle down to the rest of us has to be addressed with now.
And like I said, that's why it's taking time is that it is a complex question when you talk about constitutionality and all the different parts of this ordinance and whether or not, it don't take me a minute, but I will get it this week though.
I'm sorry, Bryce, I didn't understand. Which section of the ordinance did we have an issue with something about 18 year olds?
So the public peace ordinance itself establishes seven different curfew times based on whether or not a riot comes in as a definition. Riot is actually defined as three people that might be rowdy, as a paraphrase, but it is not declared about who actually declares a riot, which means that with the new phrasing in our school student handbook, if Mike Travis wants to use our school resource officer to declare a riot and have Muni City Police Department officers go down there and start arresting people, he can do it. It means that we have opportunities for people to pull up and say, well, there's three kids that are hanging out. We need your papers. And we can literally have any agency pop in because I don't know about the effectiveness of enforcing that ordinance when we have agreements with like, let's say, the National Lakeshore and their Rangers, the National Forests and that kind of stuff. There's way too many holes for something that was, in my opinion, looks like a knee-jerk reaction of the 92 riots. But it's a very, it's a very old unclear ordinance. It's difficult to figure out what's the right way to go. And again, I'm trying to give you some credence here because I know that you're new into this role and I don't want you to look at this concept, but it is just something I.
You and me signed it? Okay, then we'll wait for your opinion.
You put a copy in my basket, please.
Neither of you signed it, just so you know.
I know.
Okay.
I wouldn't say it. It was 92, yeah. So, okay.
No, 92, I wasn't the mayor in 92.
Are you sure?
Yes, I was the mayor until 94.
Okay, moving on. I think we're done with that.
I move we approve the attorney's report. I'll say it.
It's been moved by Commissioner Starnes, supported by Commissioner Wilkinson to, you, maybe. Okay, item one, request for marina and launch special way for the trout. And now fishing tournament. Switched tracks for, thank you, by Muni City Fire Department. And this is something we've done in the past, Devin, that we've waived it.
Yes.
And there's, from what I understand, there's going to be asked to have window passes?
Yes, we are working with the fire department on, essentially they have a roster of boats that will be in the marina and they'll be working with our hermit master on that. And then for the boat launch, which we do believe will actually at least have half our parking lot open at that point and then parking around it, some sort of disnoming function like a permit that is from, or some sort of symbol that is going to recognize that vehicles are part of the fishing tournament themselves, so.
Because last year there was a pretty big ticketing problem, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, two years ago, yep. So last year we went to, yep, so we changed the way that the, I worked with the fire department on handling that.
Okay. You going to be on the flight table this year?
I think I am. One last go around.
Okay, anybody else? Want to take a motion?
I'm making a motion to waive the marina and launch fees for the trout salmon classic fish tournament. I support.
It's been moved by Commissioner Prunick, supported by Commissioner Burge, to waive the launch, no, to waive the marina and launch fees for the trout salmon fishing classic of 2018. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, farmers and artisans market license agreements.
Yes, another annual license. I think Jessica is here from the market. I believe you're the market master?
Yes.
Okay, feel free to give me input, but this is a license agreement very similar to the last few years that we have, when you were working with Jessica and then prior to that Teresa Sowah. We did have some structural changes to the license this year. I highlighted the dates, which is just immaterial. But I'm going to take it over to Bill Lordine to kind of describe the changes that were made and why they were made this year.
So we had a market committee before and we took away the market committee. So the market master has some more responsibilities, but we did have to have some kind of appeals. If there's a problem with the market master, where they can go to, before it was this market committee. So now we're having to go to the city manager. So if somebody, if Jessica does something and doesn't provide somebody with a space or however it would be, they can appeal back to the city manager. We did limit the city manager's role a little bit. We don't want people to complain it all the time. And what it said was that applicants may appeal the decision of the market master to the Muni City manager who may only reverse such decision if it's probably egregious. So it's not going to be able to reverse things on a willy-nilly thing because then you would override her authority and everyone would probably try to do that. So we kind of raised the level, the level of that to say it has to be egregious. So if she does something that the city manager, whether it be Devin or his successor, decides is egregious, then they can change that.
How, where did you guys do away with the committee?
I am not, because I'm sure the last couple years there was not a mayor.
Oh, okay.
Committee of one.
Just not a lot of interest.
Didn't get a lot of volunteers, did you?
And we have one correction. As you pointed out, we forgot to take out master committee on section B5. Last word, market master.
Any questions?
Did I, did I miss, I read this a couple times and maybe I missed it. The, it's May 19th through October 13th. Is that every day?
No, I believe that's Monday. It's every Monday.
Every Monday the market's open, four to seven. There's one hour before for setup, one hour after for breakdown.
Is that in here?
I am not 100% sure.
I didn't read it if it is. If I missed it, then I apologize.
I believe it is on there.
I see no place where it says Monday.
Smurfs in a different part.
That's a good question. I think it may say when they're operating, but we could say Monday, so.
I would think so, yeah. You don't want it, you know, you don't want people setting up on Thursday because for the full season, it's 150 bucks. So if they want to come down on Thursday, you know.
Is always on Monday?
It's always on Monday, yep.
I would think Monday should be added to that.
I agree.
Thank you, Bob.
No problem.
I can make that change. So if you guys, if somebody wanted to have a motion to accept this with that change that will.
Has amended. I know we approved the license agreement as amended and Monday. I'll support.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Starnes, supported by Commissioner Wilkinson to approve the primary business market license agreement as amended. Any more discussion?
Oh, yeah, sorry. The wholesalers part? It says no wholesalers are permitted to sell at the market?
We just don't want people going to buy, like a grocery store and bringing in groceries or vegetables. We want to make sure that it's actually farmer produce that they're selling.
Right. The only reason why, I was just kind of curious about that, is just because the wholes. Wholesalers have been used in certain, and now I'm forgetting the definition. When you have like color street and the nail groups and all the other kind of stuff, like the MLM kind of stuff, they call them wholesalers. And so I wanted to make sure that we have a definition of wholesaler. This was a good enough definition of wholesale.
I was trying to think of color street or any other wholesale stuff here. I don't know if I said this year or whether.
Okay, all right. If it's not an issue, it's not an issue. It's one of the, when something like went to one sentence on the numerical list of things that you can and cannot do, it stands out for some of the orderings, so. You just, like, if that's an issue, it's not an issue. I'll cut, hold your shot.
It's not an issue this year. We'll be clear about it next year.
Fair enough.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, item two, oh, I'm sorry, item three. Coleman Engineering Company requests $6,171 for non-motorized transportation plan.
Yes, this is just our current billing. We are nearing the end of the plan formulation, and I have invited Coleman Engineering to come to the first or second meeting of next month to review the draft plan and then also review the data collected for our current asset inventory and then also give a presentation on the proposed improvement areas in the future.
Anybody have questions? Basically, my understanding from Devin is to assert the inventory and set the city as. I definitely take a motion.
I'll make the motion to make payment request for $6,171 from Coleman Engineering.
I'll support.
Moved by Commissioner Burge, supported by Commissioner Prunick, to approve Coleman Engineering Company request of $6,171 for the non-motorized transportation plan. Any more discussion? None? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item four, accept special awards Muni City tourist park east building bathroom bids.
I don't know if we accept the bids and place them on file. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Starnes, seconded by Commissioner Burge, to place the bids on file. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Commissioner Burge, on file. Okay.
So we have two bidders in the project. This is a project that we did the preliminary engineering and architecture on last year in tandem with the west bathroom building. This is going to be the second plan capital improvement for bathroom and shower structure rehabilitation at the campground. In our capital improvement plan for this year, we had budgeted $122,000 for a budget number for the upcoming project, low bid being $127,000 and change, puts it within a few percentage points of that bid, and both bids are qualifying bidders. And along with Coleman's recommendation, I would also recommend if you have awarded to be a little bidder. We did include the plan sheets. We did not include the actual contract documents as they're lengthy, but the plan sheets do have a breakdown, even though it is small, a breakdown of what this project consists of. You will also note that in some places there are axes over some portions of those plans. Those are the west bathroom buildings that we have already bid. We tried to get some contractors to scale with the engineering, so we had both done in one document and to be used for future bidding, which is going to be culminating now.
How old is that east bathroom?
The east bathroom is going to be 10 years old this year. So May 31st of '15 is when it went online. So, and then just as a reminder, all of our capital improvements at the campground are paid for and budgeted for with our capital surcharge that we charge for each site rental. So the capital improvements made at the campground are using self-generated revenue sources.
I make a motion, we accept the low bid from Hall Contracting for $127,350 for the bathroom, tourist park bathroom. I'll support.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Wilkinson, supported by Commissioner Starnes, to accept Hall Contracting bidder for the east building bathroom. More discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. All right, item five, wastewater treatment plant cold storage enhancement. Do you have two bids that we need to be placed on file? Want to take a motion?
Make the motion and put the bids on file.
I'll support.
Moved by Commissioner Mary Burge, supported by Commissioner Prunick, to put the bids for the wastewater treatment plant cold storage enhancement project on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Okay, question Devin?
So this is an ongoing project. We actually have been working on this for almost eight years now. The building was originally built back in 2017. It was using the last of remaining USDA ARD funds that we had left over from the Cox Edition project, which was done in '15 and '16. At that time, the project, we used, we had just enough money to actually build the structure and we put together a plan to insulate it and then make it a year-round use structure. We purchased the OSB sheeting and all of the insulation needed to perform that back in 2019 prior to COVID. Since then, the sheeting and insulation, a couple of years with COVID and limited staffing, and now with the projects we've had going on, we had, just have not had time to get to it. And so it's been sitting in storage now for a number of years. When I talked to Ron after we had the very low bid for the process pump, which we had budgeted for $75,000 for at the wastewater plant, this created some room in our budgeted capital improvement fund, and he prioritized this project. So we solicited an installation quote from Hall Contracting and from Cross Construction, and the latest one we received last week is put on the agenda. I do apologize. I did not get the Hall Contracting quote in the agenda packet, and that one was on the.
And you recommended the low bid on this one?
I'll make a motion, we accept the bid for cross-construction for the wastewater treatment plant cold storage enhancement to the tune of $11,370.
I support.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Wilkinson, supported by Commissioner Prunick, to accept Hall, I'm sorry, to cross-construction, cross-construction bid for the cold storage wastewater treatment, cold storage enhancement. $11,370. Any more discussion?
Yes. In the cross bid, it says that all materials furnished by cross will be invoiced at cost plus 10% markup. There is no possible way that any of the stuff that we don't have might need because like, the sheeting looked bad. All I can think of right now is the old airport building that rotted behind Mickey Rondo's house because nobody was able to get it up, so.
This has been protected inside, actually taking up one of the bays inside that garage. So all of it has been dry, encapsulated, and basically it's been in the way for seven years as well.
Okay, all right. So it's good to go, then, yeah, that makes a lot more sense to go.
Any more questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion is passed. All right, item number seven, National Park Service, Patricia Rock, National Lakeshore and City, letter of understanding.
Yes, so this is an MOU which is in its face a non-binding, more like a handshake agreement that's in writing. And what it is, is we have been working with the Park Service on. And what it is, is we have been working with the park service on trying to improve non-motorized access along the east side of the city of Munising. Uh, primarily Washington Street, Sandpoint Road, and in the grand scheme of things, also trying to look at how to get, uh, in non-motorized use up to the east end of the city, even further out on the east end, I'd say, uh, towards Connor's Road, up H fifty-eight, out towards their service center for their trailheads on City Limits Road. Uh, but one item is that the, the Sandpoint area, uh, we are going to be handling, uh, a section of Washington Street with the twenty-twenty-six plan. And as of late last year, the park service had funding and we're beginning the actual engineering process to bring, and this is all from my understanding, I don't know what the current status is, but they had received the funding to actually do a stretch of non-motorized use on Sandpoint Road. And this is.
From the park boundary?
From, actually from Sandpoint's headquarters to the park boundary along the ice climbing and that, using federal funds for that. And one item we had discussed is that one thing we would like to do, uh, in the planning phase as we work through a non-motorized use plan is, uh, what we do out there, we'd like to make it, commiserate with the others' project. We'd like it to look seamless. We'd like it to function seamless. We'd like to have it be as, as high a quality user experience as possible. And with the non-binding MOU, it's more so, as you will read, uh, I'm, you know, the generalization is that, you know, the type and style of construction for elevated sections of trail because of the water, we believe that there's going to be elevated sections, uh, standardizing building materials, continued collaboration, all stuff that are at this point non-binding and not expenditure related.
You know if they're planning on making it adjacent to the road or off the road?
It was, it's going to be off the road. So this is all going to be separated, non-motorized. So, but like I said, I haven't had a chance to discuss where they are with the project currently. Uh, but with the, the planning phase of things, this is something that me and.
You know, there isn't a dry spot between Munising Falls and the park.
Hence, you'll see that we prioritize elevated sections of the trail, yes.
Um, does this have any impact on the way that that multi-agency air bridge project was going?
Zero.
How are you going to get a four-foot wide path over that kind of bridge?
So we're going to, so there's actually two sidewalks and there's a sidewalk on either side currently and that's what we're going to continue to use for that. But this essentially is going to pertain to any adjacent property to the park. So that's going to be Sandpoint and Washington and H fifty-eight through that upper section by their trailheads on City Limits. They have their, uh, Cross Country Ski Trail in there and then their service center where they believe they have another trailhead there as well. So.
We will be having public, uh, meetings with the people from Washington Street?
Uh, yes, in fact, the, and I can't speak for it at this point, but the engineers during the, uh, the pre-planning for construction should be able to, uh, bring the contractor in. And I know we've done it with the other big projects. We've had a Cox Edition and had a, a neighborhood meeting is what we typically call it. And we have a presentation of the who, the what, the where and the how, so.
And then will this have any major impacts on the ambulance route?
Zero. Is, it, all this does is say that, you know, if we're going to apply for grants and build trails in the future, that we at least try to make it seamless and try to build it, you know, in a conducive manner that's going to be, uh, the best possible user experience while also being budget respective.
Anybody else?
I'll make a motion we accept the memorandum of understanding.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Wilkinson, supported by Commissioner Distardes to accept the National Park Service, Patricia Rock, National Lakeshore and City, letter of understanding. Um, any more questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item E, any more public comments? There are none, I don't have a team motion to adjourn.
I shall move.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Miss Gardens, supported by Commissioner Burge to shut the meeting. I'm sorry, I have to ask the participants, all of, oh, oh. I'll, shoot, I lost my train of thought. You guys approve?
Yeah, we can.
Aye.
Thanks for coming, people.
But that was not the mayor.